All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. Appreciate you being here. First order of business would be to see if any commissioner would like to discuss any preliminary items for next BLC meeting. All right, with none being said, we're going to our first item, which is, we won't be having the public schools presentation, so we'll go with Malden and Jenkins' audit report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Roberts. It's good to see you all again.
Good to see you too.
Good to see everybody again. We did an update presentation for you previously, and now we have concluded our travel and training audit and are here to present the results to you. All right, so we've got about 14 slides that we'll go through, focus on the scope of the audit, the approach, then we'll get into observations and recommendations related to travel and expenses, training and education, as well as Section 2115, and then we'll talk about next steps. So in September, just to remind everybody, in September of '22, the county retained us, Malden and Jenkins, to conduct an audit of the county's training and travel expenses that occurred between July 1st of 2018 through July 31st of '22, as well as look at purchases made under Code Section 2115, which we'll talk about in more detail. The audit included reviewing the expenses incurred for appropriate supporting documentation in detail, looking at policies and procedures, as well as compliance, reviewing expenditure transactions and related financial processes, looking at fiscal trends, outliers, financial processes, internal controls, and compliance with governing laws and regulations. So the scope of the audit was separated into two phases. This presentation and our report that's already been delivered to the county relates to Phase A, and Phase A includes the three bullets that we have listed here. So it's related to travel expense claims submitted on or behalf by the Board of Commissioners, three executive management positions, as well as the approximately 25 department heads. We also reviewed payments to colleges, universities, and institutes, and then we looked at transactions that fall under Section 2115. Phase B of the audit includes all other county employees, and we're ready to roll directly into that. All right, so in terms of our approach and our tasks accomplished, so we received information, system-generated information from the county that related specifically to the scope of Segment A, looking at travel expenses, and we also verified the information received. We obtained access, read-only access to Munis, your financial system as well, and actually searched the documentation and supporting evidence ourselves. We created our own testing tool, an employee travel expense Excel repository. We certainly looked at your travel policy that you have for the county, and then we did various testing on the expenses, looking at dates and purpose, estimated and actual claims, whether there was direct payments, the categories, and the supporting documentation. We identified samples to test related to hotels and lodging, looking at GSA, or Government Services Agency, federal per diem requirements, and we also looked, when we did our testing, looked at destination, the per diem rates, average room for the employee, difference between GSA rates and the actual rates, as well as the supporting documentation. So moving on to the observations, and so we've got these broken into our different categories. This relates to travel and expense claims, and so our perspective is that your travel policy right now, it's simultaneously too vague and too specific, and we'll get into more details about that throughout the presentation, but there's also significant detail in our final report. The supporting documentation that was provided, or that people submitted for travel expense claims, is inconsistent and often doesn't currently meet the requirements of your current travel policy. Your current policy does not clarify whether lodging costs should be charged to a county credit card or personal credit card, although your policy does dictate air or rail travel should be charged to a county credit card, and we get into a little bit more information on that in the further report, but we're just noticing some areas of ambiguity there within. We identified from our testing just over $1,500 in unrefunded overpayments from employees for the time period that were tested, and overpayments result from when employees are advanced for travel and their actual costs are less than the amount advanced, and then there's a discrepancy, and there's some discrepancies in what's been returned. The travel policy requires that all expense claims, advances, reimbursements, and exceptions to the policy be approved by department heads. However, we did not notice consistent evidence of that in terms of approval by department heads. We did not note that consistently. Entry of travel expense claims into Munis, again, your financial system is done inconsistently. Certainly, one of the recommendations that we have is end-user training countywide, as well as looking at your workflow that you have within your Munis system as well to allow for additional approvals and oversight. So in terms of our recommendations related to the travel and expense, we certainly believe that the county should review and revise its travel policy, really to more appropriately address your specific needs. I think there are some gaps, but there are some gaps that are specific to your county, and those relate to, or where the areas or gaps exist, relate to payments, providing supporting documentation, approvals, as well as exceptions. As I mentioned, should be formal training provided to county employees so that we can ensure better consistency and better standardization. There are some issues within the workflow within Munis, not allowing full visibility to the finance staff specifically related to overpayments, and we get into that in more detail in our report, but there are some additional controls that certainly can add value and oversight, where the county can be more proactive, helping to remedy these overpayments very quickly, and that involves just changing some of the workflow within your system. And our recommendation is that the county should review all current overpayments and ensure that employees refund the county before the end of the year. Then we'll move on to training and education expenses. So we were asked to look at county payments to colleges, universities, and other educational institutions. We identified within our five years, the 14 institutes or organizations that are listed here on the slide. You'll notice that a majority of the expenses or payments related to conference registrations, followed by CPE, which is continuing professional education. There were a small handful of others that related to a board ethics learning, as well as attending certain career fairs, and then there were a few invoices that were direct payment to a higher education institute. So looking at observations, again, related to training and education, so supporting documentation for the training and education reimbursement or payment is inconsistent, and speaking of workflow, as I mentioned before, there are some issues with invoice numbers in terms of how, when vendors submit invoices, and they don't have invoice numbers, the county doesn't have specific procedures how to deal with that, and so invoice numbers have been arbitrarily created, which has created some confusion within the Munis system. Also within Munis, during our testing, we noticed that a number of supporting documents had become corrupted, so they were there at some point in time, we are comfortable of that, but over the five years, for the period of testing, they were no longer visible or able to be accessed. So I think there's certainly, as detailed in our report, a number of enhancements, improvements that can be made with your current configuration of Munis. There were multiple check requests, again, for the training and education that were approved without an associated invoice being included in Munis within the system, and then when there were invoices within Munis, the system, it didn't always match the check request to what was included in Munis. So again, some inconsistencies, need for training, need for additional controls. We did look at employee contracts related to training and education, so we did look at the contracts, there are three that were relevant to our scope, and basically, I'm sure I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, but the contracts were not specific in terms of the language, in terms of how the employee and employer determine that the professional development of the employee is quote-unquote "necessary" and for the good of the employer. So you have that standard language in there. Our report gets into more details and talks about some nuances. There were a little bit of nuances in the language among the three contracts, but certainly, as I get to the recommendations, we'd certainly recommend revisiting that language and having some type of measure and agreement of what constitutes necessary and quote-unquote "for the good of the employer." So looking at the recommendations, again, talking about looking at your policies related to payments for education and training, again, recommending that specifically finance and your IT department work with Tyler Technologies, who owns the Munis product, and really do a deeper dive in terms of some of the issues that at least exist within your current configuration. How can you ensure more transparency, more accountability, and ensure that finance is plugged into all aspects of the check request process and the travel and reimbursement? And the last one, I think that, obviously, that the county should work to revise the employment contracts, to provide clarity about how the county and the employee, really should document and approve the necessity of professional development in advance of the expenses being incurred, so before anybody that's under contract goes out and signs a contract or obligates funds related to training and education, you know, if you revisit language including in future contracts, that really you have a step before contract signature to ensure mutual agreement. The county may also want to consider establishing an annual budget related to professional development, specifically for those employees who are on employment contract, again, just to ensure oversight into their use of professional development funds. And the third part of our scope related to Section 2115 of Clayton County Code, and it relates to informal purchases up to $74,999.99. Basically, the code states that you need to get three quotes unless reasonably unable to do so, and then it also allows for departments to make purchases up to 5,000, but between, or the limit up to the $74,999.99, there needs to be approval by either the CFO, COO, or the board chair. So we did look at the procurements that fall in there. We certainly did not find any procurements or any issues that related to any purchases over that threshold, which is certainly good. When doing our testing, we did note that an executive is allowing a staff member to use their Munis login to go in and review and approve requests on their behalf. The same staff member is also able to, so I guess with the first point, we're not able to see if the executive is reviewing and improving themselves, and then just delegating the computer work, computer approval process, or whether that is also being delegated. We also noticed an instance where that staff member was basically making a purchase or requesting a purchase, and then in the approver capacity that was delegated to that person, they were approving their own purchase. Second item related to Section 2115, the county currently utilizes the request-for-check process for many purchases under this section, instead of using requisitions and purchase orders. The use of the request-for-check excludes central services, which is basically your procurement function, from the Munis workflow, so they don't necessarily have visibility when you're using the request-for-check process, and I'll talk about recommendations in just a second, but certainly we want to enhance transparency, especially with central services to ensure that they have oversight and visibility to purchases throughout Munis. So moving on to the recommendations related to Section 2115, so the county should ensure that its policies expressly prohibit the sharing of passwords for access to secured systems, specifically within your financial and human capital management system, which is what Munis is. If the county does choose to allow the delegation of approval, we recommend that workflow be established to ensure that there's an audit trail and transparency, so that we can clearly delineate that. And if staff are delegated approver, in approver role, we certainly recommend that there's segregation of duties, so that the same staff person is not approving their own request. And then the last item related to recommendation, the county should update its financial policies and Munis workflow to ensure that everything goes through a requisition process, again, providing additional level and oversight, ensuring that central services has transparency and that they're part of the workflow. We certainly recognize that there may be exceptions, and your policy certainly allows for that, but in terms of general purchases, we certainly recommend going through the And in terms of next steps, I want to point out that, you know, this audit was not mandated. This was something that the board self-imposed, and I think you should be commended for that. You know, our report goes into much more details. This was a pretty succinct presentation, certainly areas for improvement, but I do think it's important to recognize that this was a self-imposed audit and a process for transformation. As I said, our project has been separated into two phases. This relates to Phase A or Phase 1, and Phase 2 or Phase B relates to all other county employees, so we are ready when you are to begin that process. With that, I'll yield my time and happy to answer any questions.
All right, first of all, I thank you for, you and your staff, for the work that you've done in this area. I know the board requested this audit, and obviously, it has shown that there has been a number of needs, policy needs that we need to address. Before I make any additional comments, are there any questions for Mr. Roberts, my board members?
Yes. You mentioned there has been an overpayment. Okay, has, okay, I guess that was with the administration and all staff, and all, which part of the county government?
So our presentation in the report is related to our first phase, which relates to the board members, as well as the COO, CFO, and county attorney, and plus the 25, approximately 25 department heads.
Plus commissioners.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so the overpayment mentioned, that $1,500, is that how much the overpayment is, or is it more than that?
It's $1,500. It's approximately $1,500, so, and that's the total amount, so there's many different smaller amounts of overpayments. I think the average overpayment was around $60 to $70 per transaction, where there was an overpayment that occurred.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Anderson.
How are you? I wanted to ask you, I wrote several things down. You said something about, when you were talking about professional development.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to know, okay, so, you know, you have professional development, then you have college tuition, so what were the differences? Because I just came from ACCG, and as we talked about paying for college tuition, that was like a no-no. You know, they said that that is not what governments do, that is not your responsibility to use taxpayers' money in that way. So when you say professional development, you specify what you mean by professional development.
So I think professional development can mean a lot of things to different people. Back, let me pull up this slide just to make sure I'm answering your question. So when we did our testing, majority was related to conference registration, which would be for professional development, and as well as CPE, which again, would also be for professional development. A few, 2% of the invoices, I believe it was a total of three, did relate directly to post-secondary education, and when we're saying revisit the language for your contracts related to professional development, you know, I have not seen higher education included in that elsewhere.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to specify that for the record as well. Also, it was another part, you said contracts were not specific, and you said, you said something about Tyler Technologies. What were you saying to do, you said something about check requests or something like that? Can you explain that part for me?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna ask my colleague, Kay Russell, to come up for a second.
Sure. So within the Munis system, which is your ERP provided by Tyler Technologies, the request-for-check process allows an end user to directly submit an invoice to finance for review, processing, and payment.
Okay.
What you also have is an option within Tyler as a workflow, is you would submit a request for requisition, which would then obligate those funds, and then you would draw down against them as invoices came in.
Okay.
What we are seeing is that the majority of what we were reviewing, and the majority of what the county is doing is using that direct request-for-checks process, so each invoice is processed individually, and does not route to central services for a procurement-level review when those payments are being requested.
Okay, thank you.
So our recommendation is to work with Tyler to modify workflow and to change your policies as well, to allow for more central services oversight.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That was very informative, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Davis, you have a question?
Yes. Thank you for that presentation.
Yes, sir.
As far as the GSA rates, what is your recommendation? I know we go to a lot of these conferences, they have a conference hotel, a lot of these conference hotels, I would imagine is exceeding the GSA rate. What would be your recommendation for that?
So I think, so really, it gets down to your individual and county-specific policies. I think, you know, my recommendation is if you're attending a conference and there's a conference hotel, it's reasonable to stay at that hotel. It provides opportunities for networking, saves you from travel, and saves you time. Right now, your current policies require exceptions if lodging exceeds 20% of a GSA average for a hotel, and we didn't, we did not see where those exceptions were formally noted and approved, but I think that, you know, one potential solution would be if you were to include in your policies, you know, allowance for staying at conference-specific hotels, where typically there already is a negotiated rate, and ensuring that you're getting the tax break in terms of being a government employee, and then that trumping a GSA average or mandate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And also, this audit went back how far?
Five years. It was July 1st of 2017.
And there was only $1,500 in overpayment?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty darn good, I would think. I'm like, wow. Okay, so, but you said, but to make it right, we need to basically identify those individuals and make sure that we pay back those funds by the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, or by an acceptable date. Okay, you said, I heard, revise the travel policy. What did you mean by records corruption? You were talking about some records corruption in the system?
So your Munis system, it's stored on premises, so technology, newer technology today is typically done in the cloud, if you've heard that term, in the cloud, where, which means it's not physically onsite. Your system is an older system, and has storage capacity issues and limitations, and I don't know the cause for the corruption. It could be that it's aged, it could be that you are putting so much data into it, but from our understanding with interviews, the finance has noted an issue with corrupted files over time.
Okay, so deletion or modification of records?
Yes, sir.
Okay, via definition of corruption. Thank you. I think I have one more, if I can read my writing. As far as the informal purchases go, you basically stated there's three signatures that are needed, COO, CFO, and chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner. Explain to me, and maybe I was a little confused or misguided here, when you said the staffing can begin to approve their own requisition.
Yes, sir. So in that instance, you had an executive, so one of those three positions, that delegated their approval authority to their assistant or to a staff person, and so you have that person, individual, approving on behalf of the executive, while that individual, in one case, we noted, also submitted a request. So they're submitting a request, and then they're acting as the approver on behalf, so basically, they're submitting and approving their own request.
Which is, we need to fix that.
Yes, sir.
Great, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Hi. I don't think I heard you mention anything about mileage, and from time to time, I question, you know, the mileage, because the gas prices go up or down or whatever and all, and I think, I'm not sure, finance can probably, I don't know how often we change our mileage rates and all, and I know some years back, it used to imitate whatever the state does as far as the mileage and all. So did you see anything in your report regarding that? Are we on target with the mileage rates and all, or should it be changed? Definitely not downgrade.
No. What we noted is that you follow GSA schedule for mileage reimbursement. They periodically do adjust. There was an adjustment sometime in the past six months, as I recall, and we didn't note any exceptions or certainly any, we did not note any abuse or any exceptions to that within our testing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so my questions are, reference to the overpayments. $1,500, Commissioner Davis, don't sound bad, but remember, every penny of that is taxpayers' money, and this is what was done over five years, you said?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know how far back it dates, but whoever owes that money needs to immediately repay that money, within a reasonable amount of time, but that needs to refund it back to the taxpayers of Clayton County.
Yes, sir.
Regardless of how much is owed by each, and I can only imagine that some of those employees are no longer with us as well, so we need to send them letters that they need to bring back the taxpayers' money.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, again, this audit truly reveals that we have some policy decisions that we need to make and upgrade, so I appreciate the fact that y'all have been working hard and willing to go that extra mile. So let's talk about the professional training. Now, within this report, it states that, it's very vague, let me specifically talk about the employment contracts.
Yes, sir.
They were vague as to whether or not it's allowable or not, but yet still will hold employee accountable if they're not clear on what is or is not, and that's on the board's path, because it's too vague, it's not specific enough. But you also stated that it depends on the definition of what professional development is.
Yes, sir.
How does it relate to the job? How does it relate to the county? How does it relate to the county? Is it a benefit to the employee in the county and the citizens of Clayton County? And at least in one of the instances with Vanderbilt, the degree there was for leadership and learning, learning within organizations. So for me, that's enabling somebody to be able to directly apply human development management, which is a skill set that can be improved upon by anybody who gets a higher education or degree in that area that can enhance their department, therefore benefiting the county.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate the comments you had in reference to that. And the last part I have here is, and Commissioner Davis, she brought this up as well about the contracts, $74,999. But you kept saying, and at one point it was CFO, COO, and the chair.
Yes, sir.
But this board removed the chair's authority to do so. I guess because they said, you know, doing something wrong. This audit report clearly states that I have never approved any informal purchases for less than $74,999. Is that correct? Well, that's what the audit says. So I just wanted to make sure that I gave that definition to the citizens that that claim was false and that that was just something that was taken for whatever reason. But I'm not going to belabor that point. But I appreciate what you have done to work in this area and look forward to continuing to work that needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
To make sure we tighten up our policies and make sure that everybody's held accountable.
Yes, sir.
End of the day, that's what we want, accountability to the citizens that we serve every day. If we owe money, we should pay them money. If we have a policy in place, we should follow that policy. Anything less is unacceptable. And I appreciate you once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to piggyback after that. And as you said before, again, we've gone through trainings through ACCG and they have stated to us within those trainings that we do not use taxpayers' money to pay for higher education, which you stated earlier. So I want to state that for the record. Also, you said a number of the invoices did not match the check request. So when you're saying that, you're saying that we're doing invoices, but the checks don't match what we're requesting? When how, so how is that balancing out? So what's going on with that?
Sure. So basically, it happens when a vendor does not put an invoice number on their invoices.
Okay.
And so, and this happened fairly frequently in terms of our testing environment. And so your system needs an invoice and so internally, people are creating invoice numbers. Nothing nefarious there, just trying to fill the system need.
Okay.
However, there's not a formal process of how to do that. It resulted in some duplicate numbers and confusion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you again for your presentation, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Southern Regional Medical Center. Follow-up conversation by Ms. Lena and Chief Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Ella comes up, we just kind of wanted to come back before you. We had presented to the board a few months back, just kind of giving you an update on the status of Southern Regional, where we are with its impact in our community and then some of the new programming that we were rolling out at FIRE in EMS to help support the ongoing operations of the hospital under our community crisis healthcare model that we had established. So since that time, we've had conversations with each of the board members and kind of the overwhelming thought was to come back and do an update as to where the hospital is and then kind of state for the board what the specific ask is as we look to continue the viability of the healthcare facility. And then, Mr. Chairman, the assignment you gave myself and the CFO to kind of look at a couple options, so we have that data available. So I will yield the mic to Ms. Lena and let her run you through the update of where the hospital currently sits. And then I'll close this out with kind of what that thought process is and formal recommendation to the board will be. Ella?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So first and foremost, I want to thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for the time in my last presentation to share with you the importance of having healthcare right here within our community. Southern Regional's roots started in Clayton County, dedicated as a county hospital to serve all of the needs of its residents over 50 years ago. As a county hospital, Southern Regional Medical Center was financially supported by its residents to maintain healthcare in their community. The history of the hospital is rich in serving the community. Its footprint is more than just the acute hospital. It includes medical office buildings where at one time, with an estimated over 500 offices within those medical office buildings, were full. They were full of physicians dedicated to Clayton County residents. Over time, the county was unable to sustain the financial negative impacts from state and federal decreases in payments and insurance companies shortpaying and/or denying payment for care. Exacerbated by the healthcare reimbursement cuts was the unemployment rate. That steadily rose and peaked during the pandemic. Accompanying unemployment is the high rate of uninsured residents in the county. Though the county could not manage to continue to provide quality healthcare to Clayton County residents, a physician within this community knew the importance of Southern Regional remaining open for its residents and Prime Healthcare Foundation invested in its community by reopening the doors of the district hospital and immediately investing in state-of-the-art technology and resources to serve this community. Over $50 million has been invested in the county's only hospital. As I shared with all of you in my first presentation, not only are we here providing acute care for a variety of services, we are accredited and certified as a center of excellence for bariatrics, along with national recognitions for our quality for patient safety, orthopedic hip surgery, stroke, and cardiac care, all of which were supported with the investments in Southern Regional and our community. In the state of Georgia, over the last 10 years, there have been an estimated 22 hospital closures, made up of rural hospitals and others. Right here within our community over the last seven months, we have experienced two hospital closures. These closures represent less access to healthcare. These closures represent physicians displaced and leaving our community. These closures also represent longer transport times by our first responders while trying to save a life on the back of a truck. These closures have also contributed to increased emergency department overcrowding and wait times, all of which contributes to high mortality, that's death, and morbidity. All of these factors equal poor healthcare access. For example, the availability and use of healthy foods within the community is poor. Malnutrition is high. 16.2% of our population has a prevalence of diabetes with nearly 40% obesity. The Georgia Department of Public Health data indicates that our top-ranked causes of death in our county are brain disease, including stroke, high blood pressure, kidney disease, and heart disease, and loss of cancer. The health and wellness of our community directly impacts economic development. It impacts the future of our county and its prosperity for our children. This snapshot highlights the key changes in the community that impact, whoa, we skipped. This snapshot highlights the key changes in the community that impacts the hospital. Southern Regional Medical Center was not saved by Prime Healthcare Foundation, a nonprofit, with any notion at any point that it would not remain serving this community without the community's support. However, over the last few years, the negative financial impacts have been significant. The hospital has not recovered from our community's rate of unemployment that contributes to the lack of health insurance or being underinsured. This brings us to today. We are transparently sharing with all of you that Southern Regional Medical Center cannot sustain the current debt structure incurred over the last few years that continues to grow. In 2022, it is estimated that we have provided $60 million in uncompensated care. And in 2022, we closed the year with a negative $19 million. Oh, this is very sensitive. On this slide, we highlight the impacts in our community as well as the benefit our Clayton County residents have in having their own hospital serving them. In closing, our goal is to be more than a hospital here to serve and heal a community's disease, injuries, and illnesses. We are committed to our community. We have applied to be a teaching hospital, investing in this additional cost to have resident physicians in our hospitals from Morehouse School of Medicine and other medical schools. These physicians are committed to our community. We are investing in them to remain in this community. For those of you who may not know, Clayton County is a healthcare professional shortage area and the deficit is 40 primary care physicians are missing just in Clayton County. We are also designated as a medically underserved area. We are investing to grow the access to primary care focused on wellness and prevention. Additionally, we are opening a health clinic that will serve as a residency clinic on the campus of the hospital to improve the access to healthcare and reduce the harm from cardiac disease, hypertension, strokes, and diabetes. We would also use this clinic to have a financial counselor to help our residents qualify for resources. We are a part of the community. We have provided resources and we have allocated and collaborated with our community to help our community heal. We have truly served outside of the walls of the hospital because we are the community. I am here requesting support from each of you, our county leaders, to assist with funding a small percentage of the uncompensated care. And we will continue to commit to our community to providing all of the care needed within the county for our residents in their home. And with that, I'd like to ask if you have any comments or questions?
Any questions for Ms. Lena? Or let's hear from the chief, then we'll take questions overall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your follow-up, Ella. One of the things I wanted to just restate briefly because I think this is common, misconceived amongst our community is Southern Regional, when it was purchased by Prime Healthcare, was purchased by its foundation. So it is by definition a not-for-profit institution. It's the only not-for-profit hospital south of I-20 in the Southern Crescent. So when you look at the other medical facilities that we leverage as a part of our service delivery model, we have both Piedmonts to the east and west of us and then Spalding, which is a Wellstar facility, which was responsible for closing AMC South and then, of course, Atlanta Medical Center Maine. So when you look at not only the direct impact of Southern Regional, but you have to look at the direct impact that it's having on the services that you as a board provide our citizens through our EMS department. Backups at Southern Regional means now we have longer transports. Traumas that can't be taken to Grady, we have two options. We can go to Wellstar, Kennesaw, or we can go to Macon. And that's a four-hour to four-and-a-half-hour, maybe five-hour spend time for a truck. So the longer they're out of the county, the fewer calls we have units available for it here to provide service to our citizens. So it's this crisis that we talk about with healthcare that started before COVID was further exacerbated by COVID and has simply not recovered. And you're seeing the financial decisions that are being made. I made the comment during our last presentation that if Southern Regional was a for-profit hospital, it would have closed a long time ago. So my hat's off to Prime. I've had the pleasure of working with them since day one. And they are truly committed to this facility. However, the need is growing and it's growing daily. So when we looked at it, per several conversations I've had with each one of you and then the chairman's conversation, as Ella stated, what they're looking for is help from this board to handle the Clayton County residents and the uncompensated care for those that are uninsured in our population. That amounts roughly $7 million. So we looked at two potential ways to do that, whether it was going back to a form of a dedicated millage, which the county had when the facility was under the hospital authority. At that point in time, that was a dedicated half-mill of tax revenue that went specifically to the hospital authority. In today's dollars, that equates roughly 5.2, 5.3. The other option was just a dedicated line item in the budget that goes to that, that would be set at that $7 million marker for which Southern Regional could use that to help provide that uncompensated care to our uninsured patients, further helping them continue their mission and continue to improve our medical facility. One of the things that's hard to do is to attract specialty groups, physician groups, surgeons, when you don't have the patient base to support it. And along with that comes primary care practices, which the hospital is looking at diligently, working with as well. And that's kind of where our programming in FIRE and EMS is aimed at, is trying to bridge that gap and set it up to where we can start to close some of the uninsured. So that is, you know, in talking with leadership at Prime and Ella and kind of focusing in on just the uncompensated care, prime leadership has been key in making sure that you as a board understand they're not asking you to float the operations of the hospital. They just need help with our uninsured population. And, you know, and unfortunately, we don't have the support of Fulton County, DeKalb County, the city of Atlanta, and the state of Georgia like Grady enjoys for all those patients. Yet, we're expected to take care of patients that come from Fulton and DeKalb and Atlanta and everywhere else. But we also have a high uninsured rate here in Clayton County and we understand that. But that's what we're working diligently to affect on a daily basis. So that's the formal ask. I believe that the board asked us to come back before you with and that's what we're asking for and now are open to any questions, sir. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hammer.
I'm glad you mentioned that about Grady because I just heard something in the last day or two about all this funding that they're getting for whatever, who God knows what. So now, being a nonprofit hospital, does that exclude us from getting funds from the state of Georgia?
No, it does. I want to make sure that I'm clear and ethical in my response and that is, there is nothing that precludes us from getting funds from the state of Georgia. The state of Georgia can allocate funds as they did to Grady, even though Grady is a county hospital and Southern Regional is not.
Okay.
Correct, I'm sorry.
No, no, go.
In reference to what you're saying. You've been down to the Capitol asking for money, correct?
Yes, I have.
So, okay, so I'm very vocal about my community. And everybody knows you too. Yeah, and I'm glad you do that. Now, what I was going to ask is, do we get assistance from our delegation? And from our lobbyists and all? Are they pushing and trying to help with Southern Regional or?
Yes, and I have to say that I have learned in my seven months in Georgia that there are many beautiful people that have a very strong desire to help Clayton County residents. However, our voices are stronger when we are collectively represented. And we cannot stop. Because we don't receive what we believe we should, we cannot stop. Which is why I try to spend as much time reaching out to our state representatives, inclusive of our governor, to represent my residents in Clayton County. There are three very significant hospitals in metro Atlanta and Atlanta, Grady, Emory, and Southern Regional. We cannot be forgotten. For our Clayton County residents specifically, our hospital represents healthcare access at home. I've also been invited to other counties to speak and to connect the, to demonstrate the relationship and connection between healthcare and economic development. And at a specific meeting in a certain county, I was asked why they don't have a hospital in their county. As I drove away from that event, I reflected on all the comments at that event where there was media and over 100 people that were there represented. I realized how fortunate we were and we are in Clayton County to have a hospital where the residents can go. Today, we're not trauma-designated, but we are determined and we will be trauma-designated before the end of the year. Our trauma designation will increase as we are supported to be able to increase that so we can help our first responders to not have to travel with our. so we can help our first responders to not have to travel with our patients forty minutes, an hour, an hour and a half, while trying to save someone's life, and every minute counts. Right now, our trucks, our first responders, stop at Southern Regional when you may lose your life in that transport. We stabilize in order for them to be able to continue. Southern Regional wants to stay here. Yes, Grady has received funds. Grady is supported by very, very large counties and quite a bit of funding and philanthropy. That has not been the case for Southern Regional. Emory, a wonderful institution as well, also supported by endowments, philanthropy, and other funding sources. That is not at Southern Regional. I do not have economies of scale. You do not have many Southern Regionals where I can move resources in order for things to cost less, for there to be more value. There's only one Southern Regional, one prime healthcare, one prime healthcare nonprofit hospital in Georgia. Frankly, just as Chief mentioned, it could be, and it would be, much easier for this corporation to just close and move on, and they haven't. And in my seven months here, I've not heard for a second that that's what they want to do. We know what we can provide here for our community, and we're dedicated to it, 1,000%. This support from the county, as I shared with you, 2022 was over sixty million dollars in uncompensated care. That's a lot. We closed the books at negative nineteen million. That means that someone had to support that. Someone from the foundation, the foundation itself, had to float those funds to the hospital to keep the doors open to continue to serve our community.
You mentioned the being an educational hospital, and you named some of the medical schools or whatever. Does that bring in extra funding, or how does that work? Or if we are that much in debt, will that deter those schools from working with us?
That is a great question, Commissioner. So in order for you to be a teaching hospital, you do have to apply, and that costs money. We did apply for a grant to help offset the start of the program, those costs for the application fee and such. But you're right, for every resident, you have to pay a salary. It's, on average, eighty thousand dollars plus benefits. So if you have six internal medicine and six family medicine, you have twelve that you're going to have to support. That is a lot of money. But I will tell you that that investment is only to our benefit at Southern Regional. That short-term investment is a long-term investment in our county, because these physicians who will be coming and doing their residency within Southern Regional want to be here. They want to match at Southern Regional. And when they have a desire to be here, they will stay here, and they will practice here. And we are willing to invest in growing the primary care. And what does primary care do for Clayton County? As I shared with you, we have a healthcare professional shortage, and the estimate is forty primary care physicians. That's one physician for thirty-eight-hundred people. That is why we have the issues that we have in health here in Clayton County. That is why we have obesity and cardiac disease. How do we want our residents to be able to buy blood pressure medication at sixty to a hundred and twenty dollars a bottle when they don't have a physician to go see? So what do they do? They use the emergency rooms. That is not healthcare. I am not providing healthcare in my emergency room. And that's why, again, we want to invest in creating the residency clinic that is a free clinic in order to provide that wellness. Yes, it's at a cost, but the cost is that I reduce my cost in the emergency room. The cost is that that patient who ends up with hypertension perhaps won't have the hypertension because I can treat them, because it's primary care, it's prevention and wellness. And right now, in this county, we do not have it. Our residents don't have access. Instead, we treat what ends up happening, because they can't take care of their high blood pressure, they can't take care of their diabetes. So what do we do? We invest in dialysis centers all over this county, and they have no obligation from the state or federal government to provide a charity chair. So if I am unfunded, I have no insurance, where do you want me to have dialysis? The dialysis centers aren't going to accept you. What happens? I'll tell you what happens. You fill up with fluid, and you die. That's what happens. We have to get at the source. So our desire to be a teaching hospital is at a cost, but the long-term benefit for our county and our residents is providing primary wellness and prevention care.
Do you have a date or sometime in mind to get this started?
Already did. So we expect our residents to match. Every year, a residence match in March. So next March, they will match, and we will have them starting their rotations in June.
Okay. And I only have two other things. One is the facility on, and you may, I may not know the answer to this, the facility that we, I'm not sure if that's connected to Southern Regional, the Spivey something off of 138. Is that a part of Southern Regional? Because when it was built years ago, I heard that it was like an extension of the hospital and all.
The land is. The land was conveyed in the purchase.
So what does that, what do they do? Anybody know?
So do you mean the building that's on the land?
Yes.
Nothing. There is an ambulatory surgery center there that was part of Prime that was sold in the purchase to Emory Healthcare, and Emory runs that ambulatory surgery center there. There are also offices there. We leased two of the offices. We are going to rotate primary care, as well as our specialists, through those offices in order to expand the footprint, and also we will be adding urgent cares in the area to increase access.
So their funding comes from? Anybody know?
The funding for?
For that facility.
Well, the building is not ours, it's a ground lease. We own the ground.
But I think, didn't we own that at one time, when it was built?
The original owned it.
Yes.
They owned it.
The hospital owned it, and when Emory had the management services agreement, Emory was managing Spivey Station, which was the ambulatory surgery center, and that was part of the issue under Emory's management, was a lot of, a lot of the focal point of their business model was centered around Spivey Station and not the main campus at a, you know.
And some of our money went to that building or that land.
And a lot of our patients went there and then on to Henry, as opposed to coming back to Southern Regional. So that's kind of was one of the focal points with Emory, which is why we wound up in the situation we did, with that management services agreement ultimately running its course, and then the hospital filing for bankruptcy, because a lot of that effort had been in there, and then when Prime came in, they kept the land, but sold off the facility. So Emory does still maintain a presence there. You can see the sign from 138 until we let the bushes grow up and cover it up. But that's, but no, ma'am, we don't, that's not an operation that the hospital is involved with or the county at this point.
Okay. Now, sometime back, I heard us mention something about possible funding, and Mr. COO, you might know what I'm talking about. Where are we with that? That possibly something may be available for the hospital, for Southern Regional?
Good evening, Board. Commissioner, you're referencing pretty much what Ella and what the chief were talking about. So at one point in time, we talked about whether or not there was an opportunity for a direct mill, looking at a millage increase to potentially utilize that as a funding source to Southern Regional. What they're asking for right now is that we provide a line item directly to Southern Regional to take care of the seven million. But what we also talked about, whether or not there might be some additional grant opportunities. So we've been talking to our senators specifically about whether or not there might be some great opportunities there. Ella talked specifically about our relationship with our legislators, but we're also looking at our federal legislators to see whether or not there are some opportunities. As we talk about healthcare dispersions throughout the country, Southern Regional certainly is not unique throughout the country, but certainly unique here in the state of Georgia. So we've been talking directly with our senators to see whether or not there are some funding opportunities with them as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And let me just say this, and I'm done. Ella, I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. I mean, you're not one of those folk that just sit in your office, nice office, because I've been there before you, the previous person that was in charge. I mean, I see you all over and all, and I hear that you've been different places. So thank you so much for taking that kind of time and being so considerate and passionate about what you do. So I really appreciate that. You are certainly out in the community, so thank you so much, and for staying on those folk at the Capitol.
Thank you. I love my community. I'm really enjoying my time. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Commissioner Davis.
I just wanted to say again, also, to piggyback off what Commissioner Hambrich said, thank you, because you are all over the place. You are asking, and, you know, I do believe that you're going to get everything that you need for that hospital, because, again, you work hard for the hospital, and you speak up when things need to be dealt with, especially when we talk about all of these dialysis clinics that are impeding around our county. I want to ask you just one question. You all do have a board, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And does the board do fundraising as well for the hospital?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So would that be an option for them, or is that something that they, is there an option for them to, you know, start getting, doing fundraisers and things of that nature?
That's a wonderful question. In fact, I mentioned it to Chief, that I was thinking of an event like a golf tournament, just to bring awareness to Southern Regional, and I'm not really sure why that has not happened in the past, but it is on my radar to continue to share with the community that we're here, we're not going anywhere, we're investing in you, and now I need your support.
And please, no, we definitely want to invest in the hospital, because, you know, that's the foundation of our county. But we also, you know, like I said, I always look at boards and nonprofits, and so that is one of the things that they do when they're trying to, you know, build up the income for the hospital as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. You stated something early on. You stated what Clayton County's leading causes of death were. Can you repeat those?
Yes, it's stroke, diabetes, hypertension, and cancer. So I must also preface it that I am a healthcare professional. And diabetes, though there is a percentage that is hereditary, it is contributed and triggered by our diet. If we do not invest in educating on the food pyramid that is culturally sensitive to a county, I will continue to have increased numbers of diabetes. The answer is not to give you glucophagia insulin. The answer is to educate you, and we don't do that, we don't have the resources.
I understand. Also, too, and I'm not sure if you were saying, if something could happen, are you expecting Morehouse students to have their match in May?
They'll have their match in March.
In March, for and Southern?
To start in June.
Oh, wow. Now, that's great.
Yes, and we are, we do have affiliation agreements currently for medical students. So we're very excited. There's been an interest in other medical schools to come to Clayton County, and you have no idea how excited that makes me, to know that there are people, physicians, who want to be here.
Yes. Wow, those were my two biggest questions, and I heard that, I was like, wow, there's already going to be a match for those students to begin to do a residency here. And Commissioner Hambrich made me forgive my other question.
She probably took, she probably took your question, that's what happened. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Ms. Lina, thank you for being a champion for healthcare here in Clayton County. We need somebody like you to be out there continuing, continuously driving that home, not only here in the county, but definitely down at the state capitol, and you've been there several times, and I appreciate all of your efforts. But as you can see, this board is very much in support of helping the hospital, because it's an investment, an investment in our people. It's not the hospital we're investing in, it's investing in our citizens who need healthcare that the hospital can provide. So thank you so much for, and Chief, thank you for, you and I think Ms. Merritt sat down and came up with some options in which we can look at to start to contemplate how we can take care of our citizens better. So thank you, appreciate the presentation, and with that being said, let's keep at it.
Where do we go from here?
Can I add one thing to, I think where you were going, Commissioner Hambrich? The COO reminded me, don't forget as well that this board, it's been a couple of years now, created the Medical Overlay District, which runs from Old Dixie, Upper Riverdale Road, where that major intersection is, that's a big med tech corridor that the board put in some kind of development wishes for. That corridor runs all the way down Upper Riverdale Road and actually abuts the city of Riverdale's Medical Overlay District, which I believe runs over to Roy Huey and Medical Center Way, right there by the Quick Trip. So those two medical overlay districts now abut each other, so there are some development incentives to come in there. And then, of course, with the grant opportunities that we've applied for, the 26 million that we've spoke about, to help alleviate the flooding, because that's another, that's another big issue that plagues our hospital. As you know, several times a year, we have to shut down access to the hospital because of flooding in that area. So there's opportunities there for funding, and then, of course, this board, through fire and EMS, is about to make a substantial investment in redeveloping our corner with new fire headquarters and a clinic that we're building to help support Southern Regional, but then a new fire station and all that splosh funding with the mental health. So this county is pouring a lot into that corridor, and there's a lot of opportunity there. We just got to make sure we keep it viable to see it all pan out.
And while you're speaking of the clinic, Chief, you may want to mention the clinic that, I'm not sure if it's still outside, but, you know, let the people know, the citizens know about that, and what you all are doing with that to help with some of the health needs for our community.
Yes, ma'am.
So you may want to mention that, because I'm sure very few people know that.
Yes, our mobile clinic outside is the second part. You know, we already have one, but we do have our second mobile clinic that showed up today that will be in the community. We just had the x-ray finished up today from the company in Alabama, so it will be out in force in the community, addressing a lot of these healthcare issues that Ella is talking about. What we see is a lot of our residents that have diabetes don't understand diabetes. The nature of healthcare is kind of a cattle call these days, right? You get in, they, what's wrong with you, take this, and then they send you out. So a lot of them don't realize that they can't eat snack cakes and a lot of the things that are in their cupboards and manage their diabetes. So a lot of what we're doing is that community education and trying to get them healthier, so that, to Ella's point, they don't wind up in the ER, because we're not, we're not set up to be primary care either, but that's our role in this community while we're dealing with the emergency. So on pace to run 57,000 calls this year, we'll probably get close to 60. So it's becoming untenable across the board.
I don't know if you all know this, but I am requesting that the mobile clinic be a part of the extravaganza in a couple of weeks.
If you can find a spot big enough for it, ma'am, it'll be there.
Well, you definitely have the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation once again. Thank you. All right, next up is Clayton Center, presentation in reference to one of our boards and committees.
Well, hold on. Chairman, you want to explain to the people about why they're coming before us?
Yeah, we've asked, we have a number of boards and committees that the board, this board of commissioners appoint our citizens to be on the board. So we have asked several, well, not several, all of the committees to come before the citizens of Clayton County, this board, and explain exactly what they do and how they can service, or what services they provide citizens here in Clayton County. And this is the Clayton Center, and I believe... And this is the Clayton Center, and I believe they do mental health.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Proceed on.
So, good evening. I do have brochures for you if you would like them.
You want to speak in the mic, I think.
Sorry.
Yeah, please speak in the mic.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. I'm Kadija Works. I'm the chairperson for Clayton Centers. I've been serving on this board for about five years. I've been the chair for two years, and I have, our board currently has seven members. To give you a little bit about our board, we are contracted by a state known as DBHDD, Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. We provide services consisting of mental health, addictive disease, substance abuse, child adolescence issues, and developmental disabilities. So, the way it works is after we provide the services, we are reimbursed with just called fee for services, all right? We are, part of which is known as CSBs, which stands for Community Service Boards. There are several community service boards within the state of Georgia. We were a vital part of making 988 a reality. We fought for women's rights against the heartbeat bill, because we knew there would be a direct correlation with mental health, child adolescence, and addictive disease. Out of the four commission districts, we service all four districts. We serve individuals from the age of three and up. We currently offer both in-person and telehealth services per our contract from DBHDD. Our staff currently consists of 116 highly dedicated workers. Our executive team is our CEO, Dr. Adams. We have a CFO, and we have a COO as well. Right now, we have four fully licensed clinicians, two doctors for psychiatry, which is not enough, but we do have two doctors for psychiatry, two nurse practitioners, one telehealth nurse practitioner, and some partially licensed clinicians. This is great, because out of the CSBs, Clayton County, we, we actually have clinicians, doctors. We actually have them, but some of the CSBs have suffered because of the competitive pay rate.
What CSB?
Community Service Boards. Yeah. So, we are a community service board for Clayton County. We also offer psychology in the schools through our Apex Programs, all right? Our Polycrane Center, which you guys should see on the, on the information I passed out. The Polycrane is primarily for substance abuse, but they offer GED classes, fitness classes, job readiness, and housing assistance after completion of the program. There is daily transportation. We are car accredited. This is a very strenuous audit for our service providers. If they like you, they won't come out for a year. If they love you, they'll give you three years. We are three years accredited.
Yes, yes.
So, this fiscal year, we have served 1,470 children at our youth, child, youth, and family, which is in Marlboro. 1,300 substance abuse are currently in our program for substance abuse. There's 80 in our residential program. We offer residential for some of the services. 156 in developmental disability, including our adult day program, and 5,892 active cases, which is just gonna be like mental health, substance abuse, a little bit of everything, mostly mental health. Currently, so that based on the hospital's data, roughly 50,000 people need our services in Clayton County, okay? Currently, 52,000 children need our services based on the school's datas, data, and there's a really high demand for teens. We have a high, high teen suicide rate in our county, okay? So, we are the safety net providers for these teens, for pretty much everybody. But the teens are near and dear, because our CEO sits on a mortality rate call, and it's, it's horrific. 14,000 need residential services based on the homelessness population with current diagnosis. We are currently trying to get a crisis stabilization unit for our county and diligently working with the Director of Southern Region Hospital, Hospital to make this a reality. The reason for the crisis stabilization unit is because our, we have members of Clayton County that are going to other counties, as you heard in a previous presentation, and there's no need for that. We can have it right here. So, stabilization crisis is if, if the person is having mental health crisis, then we could stabilize them in a certain facility that's gonna be watched and totally safe. That if the person is suicidal, there's staff there to watch them. This is a definite need, especially with inflation, pandemic, things like that. So, we average about 10 million in revenue. Everything is eaten up in expenses, so there is no profit. We average about 10 million, I'm sorry, all the funding is earmarked, so we struggle with funding for operations. Dr. Adams, our CEO, has collaborated with Chief Roberts as well as the court, so we can work together and help them understand mental crisis in the criminal justice world. When I started the board, we were 2.8 million in the red. This was five years ago. FY '22, at our last board meeting, we were 333,324 in the good. Let's not forget this was during the pandemic, which we operated at limited capacity, but we never really stopped providing services. In comparison to other community service boards in Georgia, you'd be very proud of the work we have continued to provide. Meaning, a lot of the other CSBs lost a lot of programming. You have to think that, keep in mind that a lot of them are rural, so some of them have collabed together. Three or four counties might make up one CSB, but it's still rural. So, it's very limited population. They've lost a ton of programming. We didn't lose any program. We had dedicated workers, working around the clock. I'm very proud of that, because it was a big deal. It was, it was rough, but we got through it. So, our board members consist of seven board members, and we have to take off work. We have to go in and out of town for meetings often. We have to attend meetings with our legislators. We attend events at the Capitol. We speak with attorneys. We read and approve contracts. I mainly read and approve the contracts, but we do it together. Make sure we are in compliance, attend state meetings, et cetera. If I am not in attendance at these meetings, I'm not in compliance with CSB, DBHDD, our state that governs us. So, I have to attend these meetings whether it's, it's mandatory, whether they don't, they don't have any clue about our personal lives and what, we just have to be there. We're asking for compensation for this board. This is a volunteer board. We definitely understand that. It's been an unpaid board, but Clayton Centers has been serving Clayton County for 52 years, and they've had an unpaid board. So, we work really hard. We're all passionate about what we do, and we are asking for pay. So, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for Ms. Works? Let, let me say this, though. I appreciate the work that y'all are doing down there, because I speak with Dr. Adams quite often. And I am have firsthand knowledge of the work that you're doing and very proud of it. This board, not the board, but the citizens of Clayton County through a SPOS, has approved for a stabilization, crisis stabilization facility to be built in Clayton County. One of the issues, and I'm sure you well know this, is that the operational cost for the employees. So, there's an issue there as far as, I, I would never want to build a building and not be able to staff it.
Right.
So, Dr. Adams and I have spoken to the Commissioner of, of Health, what's his name, Kevin Tanner.
Is that the new person?
That's the new person. Just started. We have talked to him about some funding for Clayton County, and hopefully that will come to fruition, because we just don't need to build a small building for the funds that have been allocated through the SPOS. We need to add additional funds to that, so we can build it right.
That's right.
But with that being said, we also got to make sure that we are being able to cover the facilities and the employees that we have now, because we don't want them jumping ship and going somewhere else either. Because we have great employees within that department working for Clayton County. And again, I appreciate all that they do. One thing that we can also do as a board is take a look at the stipend, not stipend, but the block grant that we give the CSB, and see if we can increase that. And at the same time, consider whether we can, because some boards can't be paid. I don't know if this is your board or not, but of course, we would have to do our homework on it. But to take that under consideration as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Anderson.
I'm gonna let her get it anyway.
Okay, Hamburg.
I just want to say, thank you all for all of your hard work and dedication. I do know the number of hours that you all put in, and I would definitely be for giving you some type of compensation for the work that you, you all do. You are, you do go out of town. You are different places. You all have fought hard for mental health within this county. And again, you know, as a commissioner, our, as commissioners, our jobs are to help with mental health and help with the, the issues that you guys are going through. So, again, I just want to say thank you all for all your hard work and dedication. It's duly noted. And that I would definitely be for making sure that you guys got compensation for all of the hard work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, first question, is behavioral health, is the employees that work there, are they considered state employees?
Yes, they switched over to state employees. When I first started the board, there was a staffing agency, but now they're all converted to state employees.
Okay. So, mostly you're, so, I mean, that's where you, that's your funding, right? Basic funding?
Yes, from state. Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's very important to note it's fee for services. So, we essentially, DBHDD would give, they used to give us a, a nice amount of money. And then, I guess about two years ago, three years ago, something like that, they started making it where we have to show a itemized list of what we spent and what we made and things like. And we're, we're basically reimbursed the money back, so we don't get that money upfront like we used to years ago. So, we have to work and, and do the fee for ser, it's fee for services. We have to provide the services, and then we get reimbursed after.
So, do they provide finances for you all for your travel and all, or is that excluded?
No, they actually, it's covered. We're actually, we, we get, well, they offer housing. We go to certain conferences, three, four times a year, we're offered to go. We try to attend them. Some of them are mandatory, because it's just for boards, because we have, we're governed by CSB boards. So, a lot of learning, things like that, training, but they will compensate us for mileage. Sometimes there's carpooling, and sometimes it's not, but we, we, we don't get compensated for taking off work. We all work, and I ha, I work a job, full-time job, and I have a business. So, I have to take off a lot.
Thank you all for serving too. And, and thanks. And I'm glad you all worked with Chief Roberts, you know, your director and all, because I had to call him one day sometime back, because I kept getting these notices about missing people and people walking away from whatever. And I say, well, I'm, I'm glad we don't have, you know, with the criminal crime thing. But it was always, um, the mental thing, you know? So, I'm glad you all are here to help with that, and that was one of the things that he was saying. Because I think we have a social worker now, I think, with the police department and all. And I'm really glad, because it seemed like a lot of our notices and our work coming to us because of people, you know, with mental issues, walking away, being lost, you know, trying to locate, you know, the missing and all. And I was thinking, you know, how some people have more of the crime thing. And thank God, that's down here in Clayton. But, but the mental part seemed like it's, it's going up. It's escalating.
They're kind of, now, this isn't my expertise, but I have a criminal justice background. They kind of run hand to hand. Crime will go up if mental health is up. People are coping instead of healing. Just to piggyback off of Southern Regional, the same thing, not enough education. There's a stigma in the community about going to get mental health help if you're in crisis. And luckily, the, the good thing is now, we're being more vocal about it. And the celebrities are being more vocal about it, which makes it more relatable. But we have to grasp our children. They're social media driven, and we're having a real issue with the teens. So, I worked at Boys and Girls Club too as well, and it's the same thing, constantly giving out resources and trying to really work with the community because of the mental health issues with the kids. And there's developmental disabilities. A lot of parents want to ignore that. And then, there's also the, the crisis with peer pressure. There's drug abuse. Like I said, people want to cope instead of heal. I also work for Defex. I do drug testing for the state. So, there's a lot of people that are coping, that are, that are not healing, and they're just coping with substance abuse. So...
Thank you all so much. Thank you so much for serving.
Yeah, in our county, we work hard to try to get this together, and we work very hard.
Commissioner Davis, you have it there.
I want to make one more statement too. I know with you all, a lot of times, just to let this board know, they meet with state officials. So, they have to take off work along with the CEO to speak with them as far as, you know, trying to get the different, you know, the different things that they need for the facilities and things of that nature. Even you guys had to meet, I know we met one time with the, with the, I think it was the state, and we were trying to get, what were you trying to do at one point in time?
Well, I remember we were doing a sustainability plan in the beginning. That was two years. Normally, other counties in a sustainability plan, if they, if they're in it, it's like less than a year if that. They put Clayton County in it for two years.
For two years.
So, we had to get on calls every month, and they would always say, well, what is your board thing? So, we didn't want to leave Dr. Adams, and he's working really, really hard, our CEO. So, we have to be present. Usually, there's a saying with us that wherever he go, I go, you know? So, we have to support him as a board, because they're gonna ask, what is your board thing? So, we try to stay as present as possible.
All right. Did either of you ladies want to interject, have anything? Okay.
Y'all should. Y'all have a say in this. You should.
Thank you again for all you did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Development Authority, Mr. Vincent.
What I sit there so long, my leg wouldn't sleep on me.
My little legs wouldn't sleep.
Yo, old basketball, football wound. It's all. Well, good evening, Commissioners. Thank y'all for having me back. Tonight, I'm gonna talk about what the Development Authority is, has been doing, and we'll talk a little bit about our favorite project. When the overview, you look at the Development Authority, you know, we do business as Invest Clayton. We're charged with supporting new jobs and investments in Clayton County per the Georgia Code 36-62-2. I have a dedicated staff, and we engage all the local governments, county departments and all, and national organizations dedicated to attracting new inbound and outbound investment opportunities. The Development Authority is committed to working with our county partners to, to developing and supporting economic growth, planning, recruiting efforts centered around the five core industry clusters, which provide the bulk of the county's employment and economic future. And those are the five clusters, those same five clusters that you're off to OED work with. We do work as a team. When you talk about the Georgia Code 36-62, there's 14 provisions in it. In every legislative session, something get tweaked to add it. So, you can go from, we can actually do the cost of projects, which includes everything, purchase of land, buildings, materials, equipment. Also, the last item there is the dissolution of a Development Authority Board. You hear some people ask, why do, how do we get rid of a board? Well, there's a provision there as well. But the, the code provides for us to do just about anything the county need in terms of building out projects, everything except golf courses, adult entertainment, or personal homes. And item 14, the dissolution, you know, that's, that's gonna be a difficult one, because we do have bonds with private enterprises, and I, you know, the county cannot own part of this corporation or that corporation. About us, we meet the second Tuesday of every month, or a special call meeting. Pretty much function just the way that the Board of Commissioners function. We meet at the Lake City Community Center. We have nine board members serving four-year terms. Some serve less, because they may get appointed to fill a vacant seat, and they'll just serve out that, the remainder of that four-year term until they are reappointed or replaced. And the board members are appointed by this Board of Commissioners. We've gotten two new members this year. The board member list is on our website. We list those out there for everybody to see and who they are, and office information, emails, all that good stuff. Our minutes are stored on our website. We also share it with the commission clerk to make sure y'all have access to those minutes to review what we're doing. We have mandatory board training and certification. We have mandatory board training and certification. The basic mandatory class is offered by the Carl Vincent Institute of Government. We have, every board member has to take that course or we will not be able to issue bonds. There's a Senate Bill 171, that probably will pass this year, that will require two additional mandatory training hours per board member every year. Our board, we have some active additional training going on through the Georgia Economic Development Association, Georgia Tech, C4, that's a large law firm in Atlanta. They offer training throughout the year, which we do participate in. Georgia Power and our investment, Invest Clayton legal team, if there's an issue, we'll have our attorney, we'll block out some time so that attorney, that legal team can actually walk board members through it and explain the law. The integrity there, we do annual BOC disclosure statements to make sure none of our board members are doing business with the county, and if they are, they have to reveal that so we can properly recuse them if the issue comes up. We do conflict of interest and indemnification statements every year, that's mandatory. Some projects, one project we took on was Project Census. We realized, when the census count came out, we realized how important that was to the county, to all communities. That was just money lying there and all you have to do is get your citizens to go fill out the application. We got involved and found out we were kind of lagging behind, so we just jumped in there, put some programming in place, and we helped, instead of just steadily bumping along, we had, we took that, saw that spike. And that spike was worth about $64 million in additional funds to the county. And of course, that's over a 10-year period. You all graciously provided us with some training funds to support our workforce development initiatives. Item number three, about $182 million in bonds. We typically do anywhere between two to four projects a year in the county. So this is pretty much typical. You see some there, some expansions at Clorox, Clayton State and the Rock Hill, that's the logistics center in Ms. Hamrick's district, and of course, the OA project up on Conley Road, that's the big project up in Mountain View. We got some splotch projects, the Gilbert Road is critical, that's a project where we're not only straightening up Gilbert Road, but once Gilbert Road is built down to Conley, that will open up like 130 acres of land in that Mountain View area that's just prime for all sorts of development up there. And of course, as that moves forward, Ms. Hamrick, that's where, that's your district and you'll be heavily involved in that. We're going to make sure of it, so we can get exactly what you want there. But that is huge up there. And of course, the incubator project, that's pending, ongoing, and we'll discuss that at another point in time.
Is that incubator?
No. Ma'am?
I was asking if the incubator was me. You said the incubator.
Oh, no ma'am. Well, no, that's not tied to Gilbert Road. The incubator is the, it's the what now? It's the county workforce incubator. That.
No, no, no.
The business incubator.
Go ahead.
5711 Jonesboro Road, that is the Roman United project. And what I have here.
Is that the incubator, I'm sorry?
No ma'am, the incubator, we, it should be part of that, but that's something we cannot really discuss anymore, because according to your attorney, that could be some legal actions. So.
But is it tied with that Roman?
Well, that's up to you all, and we don't know where that's at, and.
Please proceed on.
Are we straight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We did succeed in, I spoke to you about the contract with Tudor Perini Construction Corporation. We did get that contract executed on March 7th, which is the same time as last week. They did get that done. I have a copy here and I'll make sure I email it to everybody on this board and all your staff, and also I'll make sure members of the press get a copy to make sure everybody understand everything that's going on. We won't have anything left. And this contract will provide a lot of the pre-construction engineering, you know, drawings, estimates, geotechnical work. And Roman did hire Grace Consulting to do the DRI, and what this contract will provide with construction schedule will be updated and redistributed, once we get these people on the ground. The Roman team is not here tonight, because we cannot discuss the incubator anymore, and all we need to talk about tonight is this contract. So I recommend that they continue their work to get this project up and running versus spending thousands of dollars to reroute everybody and change travel plans. Workforce development, you know, I never forget the day the chairman and I got the call about our high unemployment number. It's kind of interesting, but right now, we, you know, we went from 13.8 to 3.7, and some of the things we did as a Development Authority, you know, we just jumped right in there and started hosting job fairs, put together a website, so the citizens of Clayton County can find out all this employment information. I joined the ARC Workforce Board, of course, the chairman is the elected official that oversees that board, plus the partnerships throughout Clayton County, what we discovered, we have so much help and resources out there, it's like overwhelming to the citizens. So we put together a resource guide to try to truncate all this help to one place, to where they know where to go to get it. Some of the unemployment rates, how we rank, you know, nationally 3.4, Clayton County is 3.7, the state of Georgia 2.7, the metro, the Atlanta regional unemployment 2.6, of course, our ARC board represents seven metro counties. So even though we're the highest, but it's still talking about one point off, that's pretty good. When you talk about workforce update, what it means to us, income recovery, when you look at some of this income recovery, what it means to our county, when you go from 13.8 to 3.7, that represents about 14,000 people going back to work. And I just did sixth grade math here, where we multiplied by the household income, that's 873 million plus dollars put back into our community by getting 14,000 people to go to work. Some people like to use the medium income, and that's 51,497. And once again, that's a $731 million back into our homes, back into our families, back into our communities. The county see the benefit of that, because most of that money is spent locally, where taxes are collected and paid and recycled. So it's a, it's a win-win for everyone. Average household income increase, you saw the, we went from, from 2017 to 2022, it was 51,945, 2022, it was 61,523, just a difference of $9,500 times 98,000 household in Clayton County. These are some markers to look at, at what the value of workforce is, and that's why, you know, we, when it came up, I didn't hesitate to jump on this and run with it, because of the value it means to Clayton County. Now, a bigger issue facing Clayton County, we are a tier-one county. We're the only tier-one county in metro. How do we address this tier-one status? Because it really, it's almost like the tale of two cities. On one side, we're doing really good, but on the, there's another side of this, the other side of the corn, we are tier-one. And what makes up a tier-one designation? High unemployment. We're 3.7 versus 2.7. We have closed that gap, but we got to close it some more. You look at the low per capita income, the state per capita income is 26.5, we're at 23.5. That gap has closed, and we're going to continue to work to close it even more. High percentage of residents below the poverty level, the state is 14, we're 19. That gap is closing. These numbers are tied directly to the healthcare concerns. This is the part of the population that has the most impact on everything that happens in our economy. With 55% of our population being female, about 29% being children under 18, you put those two together and you come up with single female head of household, and that profile of citizens are impacted by everything. Unemployment, violence, poor eating habits, poor health. And this is where we got to be very strategic in how we address these three items. And I understand the county may be looking at a workforce department or however you do it, we're here to work with the county to stand this up, because it's critical to continue the recovery of lost funds, but also address this part of this whole workforce development. We had a workforce development retreat, one of the things came out, you know, we talked about workforce housing. How do we address that in the county? We're, we have, old stack of housing is affordable, but is it desirable? Livable communities are needed, apartment and townhouses versus condos. And the recommendation, have a workforce housing summit to bring all these partners from the county in and come up with a strategic approach to things. When I'm not doing all that and trying to be a father and a husband and all these other things, there's 26 other projects I work on throughout the day and month and year. I kind of highlight some of them, item, you know, number five, support all your initiatives and the OED team, the ARC Development Board, working with our school system on graduating senior programs and projects, and some of the community stuff, Forest Park LCI, Lake City Strategic Plan Team, the county LCI team, the county's redevelopment and development plans, the Marla TOD support, I was part of that team and made recommendation to Patrick and Erica. The intergovernment agreement, we've sent that back over to you guys and have you, whatever direction y'all want to go in, that's fine, there, we'll just work that out. Part of the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta, we get an extra $500 a month by being a part of that toward our labor tax credit from the state, that's why we're at 4,000 versus just being at 3,500. Of course, I work with most of your departments, BOC, COO, CFO, HR, community development, Tax Assessor Board, Tax Commissioner. It's probably not a department I don't touch in the county, because if we don't work as a team, we won't go, we won't get nothing done. We have a lot of assets and I utilize all of them every chance I get. And that's what your Development Authority does. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Vincent. Are there any questions?
So, Mr. Vincent, did you just say, I was listening to your presentation, you were saying at this time, that, because you were supposed to be in Roman United tonight.
That's correct.
So are they not, you're not able to ask or answer questions in regards to Roman United?
I can, except the incubator part, we can't touch, because, you know, your county attorney discussed a letter they sent. And as long as lawyers are talking to lawyers, it's best not to discuss that. Let the lawyers hash that out and tell us what we can and cannot say.
Okay, that's fine, because I wanted to discuss with them tonight, what we're going to do about this $559,000 that we've given them, and how can we get it back?
Thank you.
But that's okay, like I said, we'll get to that at some point in time, because again, I have a breakdown of what we paid and how we've paid it, and the services that we've gotten, the services that we've not gotten from Roman United. And so again, we'll get into that, but at some point in time, you know, they, I thought they were going to be here tonight, so we can continue to discuss that.
Even if they were here, they couldn't discuss it with you.
That, I know, I know. It's called deflection, thank you.
No ma'am, it's called the law.
Yes, it's called deflection.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
All right. Pension funding presentation, Finance has Buck here.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. On behalf of the Pension Board, I've asked Kevin Spanner with Buck Consulting to speak to you tonight on the status of our unfunded liability within our pension plan, and to also provide some recommendation on how we resolve that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So as Stacy mentioned, my name is Kevin Spanner, I am the actuary for the pension fund. I don't know if you guys know what an actuary is, but I'm basically a mathematician that comes annually to the pension board, and I present them with financial information and some projections of, you know, how's the pension fund doing, what's the kind of liability we have on the books, and how are we going to pay for these pensions, so that when your members and your employees go to retire, we have money to pay for their pension plans. So, whoops, that's a very sensitive clicker. So recently, we've been discussing as a pension board, the way that these funds are paid for by both the members, the county, and the water authority. So your pension plan is funded and sponsored by not only the county, but your water and sewer authority as well. So that, that method is based on a county ordinance. So currently, the county ordinance has a 13.9% of payroll requirement from the county and the water authority, and a 7.5% requirement from members. So that money goes into the fund every year through payroll deductions from your members, and also the county and water authority making their contributions. Now, we take that, that money and we compare it towards what is required under the Georgia law. So Georgia law requires a certain level of funding for pension plans, okay? And that's under Georgia Code Title 472010. And that is based on paying for both what your members are earning today, so you have active members accruing benefits, you know, they're working their jobs, they're earning their pension benefits, there's, there's money that goes towards that, both from the members and from the county. And there's also this, what we call an unfunded liability. So what, what is that? As an actuary, I come to the board and I present annually a valuation that calculates the present value of the money that's due or been earned, right? So we look at every member, both retirees, actives, and we say, okay, they've earned X number of dollars of benefits, we expect a payment stream, and we discount it all back today and we come up with a present value, right? And we compare that to the money that's been set aside in the trust, that money that's been contributed through the county, the water authority, and the members that's invested, they have investment advisors that come and they, you know, they help them with that money. But my job is to help them understand, okay, what's the debt and how are we going to pay for it? So we've been, we've been discussing this, because there's a new standard of practice that's going to require me as an actuary to disclose whether or not the way we're funding this plan is reasonable, is it going to pay off the fund? And if not, I'm supposed to come up with a reasonable contribution and tell the board, okay, you're contributing X, but maybe you should contribute more, maybe you should contribute this Y number, in order to fund the plan. So as part of this process, we have done some analysis, and we did a 30-year forecast, okay? So what we've said is, okay, what if all of our assumptions happen over the next 30 years? What if you earn the return that we're expecting? What if your members work as we're expecting, they retire when we expect, they, they receive their pension as long as we expect, and so forth? How would our funded status look over the next 30 years if everything we think is going to happen, happens, okay? And what we found, and I'm going to get to that, is it basically remains the same. And that's because of the way the Georgia law works when it comes to funding pension plans. And the way the Georgia law works is it says, okay, every valuation date, we figure out how much you have unfunded, and we say, okay, what would it take to pay that off over 30 years? Kind of like a mortgage, right? But the problem is, is that 30-year never changes. So I come the next year and I say, okay, what would it take to pay off this fund? Well, in the next 30 years, it's going to take X dollars, and then I come the next year and it says, what is it going to take to pay off? Oh, well, in the next 30 years, it's kind of like refinancing every year. So the, what we're presenting to you today and what we're recommending is updating your current ordinance, that ordinance, the 13.9 and the 7.5, that's been in county ordinance for a while. Looking at that, increasing that number, so that we can start paying for these benefits and get closer to 100% funded, which is the ultimate goal. So today, we're going to talk about increasing that total percentage rate up to 29%, okay? And I have numbers, I will go through them. But what that would do, and what it's projected to do, is it would get the funded status up to 95% after 25 years. So the question is, why, why do I care about being 95% funded in 25 years? Under your current ordinances and the pension benefits that you provide. Under your current ordinances and the pension benefits that you provide, anyone hired after January 1, 2016, cannot receive a COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment. So your member, your, your employees that were hired prior to that date, they're getting automatic cost of living adjustments after seven years, okay? So after seven years of retirement, they get a little bit of, it's, it's inflation protection, right? Your benefit goes up a little every year to help you with the fact that inflation kind of, cost of services go up every year. Anyone hired after January 1, 2016 does not have that same protection. Your law says that in order for them to get that increase, the first step is, are you 95% funded? If the answer is yes, then your pension board is allowed to provide a certain level of cost of living adjustments. So 25 years from now is about when it would be time to start talking about giving those cost of living adjustments for those members, right? We're, we're talking about people hired after January 1, 2016, they haven't been here that long, they still got a while to work, we've got some time. But, but we need to help correct the path in order to get there. So what we've come here today is two, there's a typo on the slide, it says four, we have two 30-year forecasts to present to you. And all it is, is to illustrate kind of the, the path we're on, and then the path that we could be on if, if the ordinance was updated to 29% in total. So that, this forecast, very important, it assumes that what we're assuming today happens, right? We earn 7.75% return annually. Now, that's not going to happen every year, some, I mean, it's been a pretty rough market out there the last couple of years, it hasn't happened the last couple of years, but we're assuming annually we're going to have that, and then also, we're assuming there's no changes to our assumptions, right? Because that happens from time to time, we come and we redefine, I was here a few years ago discussing that with you guys. So just with those assumptions, just to show you kind of where we're forecasting, this shows you the results of a 30-year forecast, and all this is, is your funded percentage. So today, as of July 1, 2022, that's the last valuation, we do a snapshot every year, so this is the most recent information we have available, you're about 64% funded, okay? If we were to make no changes, you guys say, thanks Kevin, it was nice seeing you, I love talking to actuaries, whatever that is, have a nice night. You, you would be following the, the law, there's, there's no doubt about that, you, you've done what you have to do, required by the state, but I would tell you that I would expect you to be on that yellow line for the next 30 years, which shows that in 2051, this plan would be about 61% funded. So not really paying off that debt, it's just kicking, I, I call it the kicking the can down the road method, right? The blue line shows you what happens if you were to increase that ordinance to 29% in total. So instead of kicking the can, now we're going to start paying for that debt, right? And, and when I say paying for that, this is benefits that have already been earned by your, your members, your employees. This isn't future benefits that we're trying to, to fund early, this is, these members, these employees have earned these benefits through promises and, and what's been owed, you know, as part of their compensation, and it's, and it's getting to where we have the money to pay for them. So that blue line shows that you would get to 100% funded, which is, the ultimate goal is to have the money, right? 100% means you have the money today to pay for your debt today, right? That's their ultimate goal, and it shows you get there about 2048, and you get to 95% funded in 25 years.
Can I have a question off this chart?
Yes, sir.
Does this, is this chart indicative of if the current number of employees in the county stays static?
Yes, this assumes that your current population, your current members stay static. Yes, sir. So as members leave, you're, you're replacing those, or as employees leave, you're replacing those employees, but you're not growing your population of employees, you're not shrinking them, this is assuming a static population. Yes, sir. Any other questions before I flip?
Now, go ahead, proceed, please.
Okay. So the, the question, I mean, I, I sat in the audience, I heard all the funding issues you guys have, and I don't want to sit here and pretend like I, I, I know the best use of your funds, and, and I'm just here to speak for the pension board, right? So this, this shows what our forecasted results would look like for the, the upcoming year. So under current ordinances, the employees would be paying 7.5% of their payroll, the county and water authority, per your ordinance, would pay 13.9 with an additional 4.5% of payroll to meet Georgia minimums. So you would be paying a total of 18.4 as a county and a water authority, for a grand total of 25.9% of payroll, or 38.7 million dollars going into the pension fund, from all those various sources. So that 38.7 is not what the county's paying, that's what the county, the water authority, and the members are all, your employees are, your employees are picking up some of that as well. So if you were to update to 29%, you can see you're, you're at about 25.9 now, so we're talking 3.1% increase. We're showing how this would look if the county and the water authority, if the ordinance was updated just for the employer. I'm not here to tell you what the employer should pick up versus what employees should pick up, I, I'm just here to tell you that we need a little more funding to get this going in the right direction. But we're talking about 4.6 million dollars in next year's budget, and I would, I would tell you that that's an ongoing, it's not a one-time, 4.6 isn't going to fix the problem, it's, it's ongoing funding. So, woo. So recommendations is to update the percentage of payroll to 29% in total, not 29% for the county, it's 29% in total when you add the two numbers together. And doing that would help you get in line with standards of practice, and it gets you on the right path to funding this, these benefits. And then your next decision, if you decide to go to 29%, is to determine if there's any cost sharing with the employees of that increase. So that's my prepared remarks, Stacy, or any questions for me?
Any questions from board?
I, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you say you come before us, how often, every?
So I meet with the, the pension board at least once a month, once a year, sorry. So they meet quarterly, the pension board does, and as a, as a board, they review the administration of the plan, they review the investments of the plan. I'm, as, as the actuary, do a one-year measurement. So every July 1, I collect census data, like who all's the members today, who all survived, who all got hired, who all retired, I collect all this information, right? And I do my actuarial modeling, and then in the November timeframe, I meet with the pension board to provide them my results. And I tell them, okay, this is how much money you have today, this is how much liability you have today, here's how much is unfunded, how are we going to pay for that unfunded? Currently, they're following Georgia law and your county ordinances, but as I've shown you, we don't think that's going to fund the plan in a very significant way over time.
So I'm wondering why are we at this point now where it seems like it could have been recommended sometime back?
Well, so there's a couple of things going on that, it's, it's kind of a snowball effect, right? You've got the, what's happened in the economy the last couple of years has, has significantly had an impact not only on your, your members and, you know, the county itself, but it's had a negative impact on the pension fund. We've got these new standards of practice that are going to require us to, to look at this a little more deeply and to actually disclose whether or not what we're paying is, and, and it's through conversations, right? So through education, you know, the board's been going to, the board goes through education, and then I provide education as well. So this is just a culmination of all those, those items today. Could this have happened five years ago? I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it's a debt, I, I'm not here to talk about, should you have done it five, 10, 15 years ago, I'm, I'm here to tell you that you, you may want to consider doing it today.
Okay, so, okay, if we go with the recommendation, I guess other than maybe inflation or whatever, will you or whoever is in that position keep us afloat so we won't get in this position?
So the recommendation I made to the pension board, and I'll tell you now, is that you don't just set it and forget it, right? Because you, you could set this to 29% and then forget about it until someone, my, my recommendation to the pension board was to, to constantly monitor it, maybe, you've got to give it some time, right? You're going to have fluctuations every year, so maybe every five years, say, okay, Kevin, or as you, whoever Kevin is at that time, hopefully, hopefully it's me, but, you know, to look, to look at the, you know, you never know. To look at, to look at this and say, okay, are we on the path we thought we were going to be on?
That's my fault.
And, and should we, should we adjust our path? Yeah, yes, ma'am, I don't think this is a one-time, it, it's, it's setting a game plan, and then there's monitoring of the game plan as well.
So who monitors that?
Well, I do an annual valuation, I'm monitoring it annually, I'm doing that now, it's just, we're on the yellow line, I'd like to get us on the blue line, but yes, I, I monitor it annually.
Okay, and how often do you report to the pension board?
Annually.
Annually.
Because it's, it's a snapshot, right? I look at things one year at a time.
Any other questions?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
What are some of the investment vehicles that this pension board is, is using?
So.
For amortization, as, as well as are there any investment vehicles that were underperforming that possibly could have put us in this position?
So I am not an investment advisor, and I do not, I do not talk to your pension board about investments, they have, you know, professionals for that. I can tell you there are Georgia laws that have different vehicles that they're, that are available to pension funds, and they are using those vehicles along with a professional to determine how to best invest those funds to meet the inject, objectives of, you know, getting a return on those investments in order to help fund the plan.
If you want a copy of the most recent report we've gotten from them, I can get that for you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
I do have one thing I'd like to add, so the recommendation is to move to 29%. So I was wanting to get some feedback from y'all, so the pension board can make a formal request to you as the Board of Commissioners, so we can move forward with updating the ordinance and get this in place in time for the new budget year. So do you have any questions or anything else you want to ask?
Let me recommend this, and I'm sure you're probably going to go down that same road, provide us with this information so we can take another look at it?
Okay.
And ask any other questions individually that we each might have, and then we'll circle back around and address it at a later time, not too long, but at a later time.
And let us know, too, as far as budgeting.
Yeah, how much?
How, right, and, and where it will come from, you know?
It will come from the general fund, we are looking at about, what did we say, 4.3?
Well, that, 4.6, but that is not 100% county, right? Even if you don't pass it on to your members, the water authority does have some skin in the game as well, so.
I would say probably the majority of that.
But I would say the majority of that is.
And it would come in the form of a line item?
Yes.
In the budget.
So now you mentioned 29%, you say a total of 29, so is that a combination of the employee side and the county?
Well, I'm here today recommending to increase your ordinance to 29% in total. Currently, your members pay 7.5, the county and water authority pay 13.9, and the county and water authority pick up any additional above the 13.9 to meet Georgia minimums. How you, how you get to 29% is not.
But 29 is the magic.
29 is the number that we, we've, the, the question was, is how do we get the plan funded? And then we came up with a good target, which is, we would like to be able to afford to provide cost of living adjustments for these, these employees 25 years from now, and what, what kind of rate would it take to get there? And that rate is 29 in total.
Gotcha.
So I would like to encourage you to maybe look at the county taking on that responsibility because the employee contribution rate that we have for the county is one of the highest in the metro Atlanta area. We did look at increasing employee percentage even a half a percent, and it's not a significant amount. So that's just my two cents.
Well, we appreciate that. Okay.
Last question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
With some of the other counties, you're saying the magic minimum was 29%. Are there any other counties that are above that 29% threshold, and what would that percentage be if so?
Well, I first off would like to say that each, each one of these counties are different. You provide different levels of benefits, right? So your, your, what the benefits your employees are earning are different, and I don't, I think Stacy did some research, but.
I did, like you said, each plan is different, I was looking at it more from the, you know, retention of employee and staff as the amount that the employee would pay out of their paycheck, and we are one of the highest in the metro Atlanta area. So that's kind of where I was coming from it, but as Kevin's saying, each plan is completely different, so it's hard to compare apples to apples.
And, and some of them maybe are already on a, a plan to get funded, some of them maybe are just doing the Georgia minimum and doing the kicking the can down the road approach, right? So e- each, each county, along with each pension board, have to make a decision about their plans, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
All right, y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mentor Protege Program, first cohort update, Ms. Rogers.
Good afternoon, well, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. What I wanted to do is just give you all a brief update, I know we always talk about programs that we're starting, but we wanted to actually show you what we have achieved within the year. I came to the board last year to discuss implementing a Mentor Protege Program, part of it was giving our small local businesses opportunities, that's what we do with the SLBE program, but also, it was directly a part of the, the Crest team did the study with Clayton State and other stakeholders for the county, and the Mentor Protege Program was also something that they thought we should move forward with as well. So tonight, we'll be brief, but we are going to present to you information, I have two people from my team, Tammy McKenzie, she's our Contract Compliance Manager, and Eddie Eze, Mr. Eze is going to give you all a presentation, he's our Program Coordinator for compliance, so he's been working really closely with our mentor and our proteges, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eze, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, how's everybody doing today? Okay, and I just want to say from the outset, I'm extremely thrilled to be here, I came in, in September, and, you know, to actually be engaging with the program and having the opportunity to, you know, really cultivate this first cohort has been a tremendous honor, so thank you. So today, we will be talking about the actual, we will be discussing the first update in the Mentor Protege Program. So the purpose of the Mentor Protege Program, the MPP in essence helps eligible small businesses gain capacity and opportunities to bid on county contracts through partnerships with more experienced, more experienced companies, basically our mentor components, and, you know, it allows the proteges to acquire valuable business development help from their mentors, including business and financial management skills, navigating contract bidding, and cultivating those long-term relationships to help build the actual business capacity within the protege firms. The MPP's primary objective is to facilitate the enhancement of business competencies thereby increasing the capacity of the business firms in essence. Oh, sorry, clicker is sensitive. So overview of the program, the Clayton County Central Services Mentor Protege Program was created in February of 2022. The program was created to foster a more competitive environment for Clayton County projects, to allow our SLBEs to be more competitive in the contractual space, and build a broader base of small local business enterprises within the county. And the program's immediate objective is to strengthen the long-term stability of SLBE firms by focusing resources on critical business skills that contractors need to compete successfully in the open market, so allowing our SLBEs to come on board, to really build up their business capacity and competencies so that they can effectively go out and bid in the Our first cohort consisted of three mentors and four proteges, a really incredible group, our mentors were Major Construction, Triad Construction, and Brad Construction, and our four proteges were Allen Properties, Real Time Security, and Carter Construction. So trainings and resources, we provided an abundance of trainings, you know, for our, both virtual and in-person for our proteges, our subcontractors have attended virtual workshops and trainings where they have gained. where they have gained in a plethora of knowledge and skills, specifically when it comes to contracting and topics tailored to areas of their company's development. Some of these trainings they've received and have been sponsored by the Small Business Development Center and SCORE Atlanta. And some examples of these SBDC trainings have been marketing for success, digital marketing and online solutions, and management with a plan. These specific trainings have been designed to specifically build up their competencies within their specific business capacity. And we've, you know, done a pretty diligent job of allowing them, you know, virtual options as well as in-person options to come out and actually build up their business capacity within the county. So successes and challenges, and we, we say challenges loosely, I was like, because our proteges have been able to come on board and actually really, you know, overcome these challenges. But specifically, the successes have been recommendations for subcontractors, including tips and feedback from their experienced mentors that will help build, help their firms build the capacity. And additional examples of these recommendations have been, the mentors have provided, their, their specific firms discussing and discussions around reading proposals and building up their specific communication techniques and allowing the subcontractors within their monthly meetings to discuss bidding opportunities, contracting opportunities within the county across a plethora of different scopes. And also, they discussed bid preparation and submission. So, again, you know, we tried to, specifically within the program, any challenges that were faced or obstacles were access to financing and the ability to obtain bonding. But our proteges have been, and our SLBEs have been, you know, tremendous when it comes to participating in workshops and collaborating with the SBA to actually, you know, receive additional knowledge when it comes to funding so that they can, you know, address the challenge of financing. Our specific SLBEs have, excuse me, participated in workshops and collaborations with local banks to provide financing opportunities to the proteges. So they've been able to actually go out, and you'll hear in a moment, really seek out these resources and really seek out these training opportunities to help build up their specific competency. And with that, we were fortunate and have, have the distinct honor to close out, you know, the first half of our, of, of our MPP's six-month, I mean, excuse me, one-year program. In December, we were able to bring on our mentors and our, mentors and proteges to, you know, fellowship and also, you know, really honor them for actually coming on board and taking upon this challenge of coming into the program and building up their specific capacities. Bless you. Excuse me. So what's next in the program? Well, we will officially be moving into our architectural and engineering firms. And I can confirm today that we actually have a kickoff of Thursday, April 6th at two o'clock, where we will be bringing in five newly established mentors and five newly established proteges. So our architectural and engineering firms, me and Tammy, we were fortunate enough this week to actually, you know, do the pairing. And I'm really excited about this specific cohort. And also, you know, just how energized and engaged everyone is in the process of coming into the program. Oh, excuse me. So with that, what I would like to do now is give, yield the mic and give the floor to an outstanding protege that has actually come into the program and has gone above and beyond in every training opportunity and every resources that she has received from her mentor. We wanted to have our mentor here with us today. He was not able to come due to a family emergency. But I really want you guys to get a personalized testimony from one of our participants regarding her testimony in the MPP. So I would like to introduce Keela Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Eddie. Good evening, board members. Hi, girl. So I'm a little nervous. But I wanted to, when Tammy and Eddie asked if I could come and speak and testify with my experience with the program, I said absolutely. So just to give you a little history, I won't keep you long. But, so during COVID, I decided I wanted to venture out into the construction industry. Not my background at all, but I wanted to do something for my family for legacy building. And everybody, we're always building, right, construction. So I knew of people getting certified with the city of Atlanta because I knew I needed to get a leg up, somehow be able to get into the door because it's so competitive. So I started with the city of Atlanta doing the certification process, and it was very, very brutal. But it was great because once you get certified with one city, it's pretty much easier to get certified in other cities and counties. So what happened was I started getting emails. I guess there's some type of email distribution. I guess once somebody gets certified, everyone starts emailing you. And I started seeing Clayton County, Clayton County, Clayton County. And I was like, okay, well, Clayton County. Then I found out about the SLBE program, got certified through the process. And from there, then I really started getting emails from Clayton County. So I say that to say, there was an email that struck me, and it was about the mentorship program. And I said, oh, well, this is interesting. I need, you know, mentorship. I don't know what I don't know, so let me, you know, inquire. And one of the representatives was very nice, and she said, well, we're still putting it together because it's a pilot program, but I'll send you the information when we get it. Fine, no worries. So I got the information, probably about like two months later. And there was, you know, a list of items that you had to, in order to get approved or apply for the program. So I marked off everything, A, B, C, and D. And the last thing they said was, well, you have, one of the criteria is you need to have made a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, I'm like, well, if I made a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I wouldn't need a mentor, right? So I emailed her, and I was very passionate because I said, I need help. I need somebody to help me. And she was very empathetic with me. And she said, well, let me just, you know, write me an email, explain your case, and I'll pass it on to the powers that be. So I did that, very passionate email, just that I need help. I want to do this, this is not just a hobby for me, it's because I want to do it for my family. And I don't know, like I mentioned before, what I don't know. So next thing I knew, I got an invite for an interview. No problem, I know I could ace the interview, right? So the interview comes, I do well, next thing I know, I get accepted into the program. And let me tell you, let me back up just a little bit. When my partner and I, when we were doing the, sending out proposals, trying to get, this is a year into it, we're sending out proposals, and we weren't getting any hits. And I couldn't figure out why. I have someone, my partner's forty years into the masonry business. I'm business savvy, at least I think I am. And we weren't getting any hits. So when I got accepted into the program, I said, I need help with estimating. I think that's where my hiccup is. And they did like a consultation with me, and we figured it out. And so I started going to outreach programs, doing trainings, seminars, things that were available through the program that I'd never seen offered in other counties or other cities. And I was, I learned a lot, a lot, a lot of hiccups in, in it. Not with the program, but just throughout the outreach, just understanding the industry moving forward. Because I know you guys have been here a while. But long story short, Clayton County and the central services have been very instrumental in my success. I actually won my first award, it was north of a quarter, so thank you. And I'm very excited, I know for a fact, had it not been for this program, I wouldn't. Because I didn't know what I didn't know. And they've been very instrumental, very supportive. I can call, email, and they're always answering. In fact, let me just say this really quick. I got another email solicitation from Henry County. And it's something going on in Henry County, trying to make it so that, to help small minority businesses with contracting. So I said, why don't I just get on the call and just listen, just kind of see? Because I don't want to get involved in any, you know, legal actions or any kind of cases, you know? So I listened, and I said, wow, they, they need to talk to Clayton County because they need mentorships.
You just stay with us.
Yeah, no, right, right, right. I said, they need, so I got on, you know, because I muted, took the camera off, zoomed, so they go, you know? And I got on, and I said, listen, Clayton County does something really wonderful. And I shared my experience and everything we have. And they said, well, can you tell us? No, I can't tell you. But I can tell you that the program was very successful for me. It helped me, and it's given me hope that now my actual project starts next month. So, I'm very nervous. But I'm very thankful. I'm thankful for Clayton County, let me just say this, too. I am, I live in Alpharetta. And I'm up there because of, my son goes to high school there, and he's a senior, yay! And he's graduating. But I love Clayton County so much, I'm going to be moving down there. I do. So I want to come, bring down here, testify, and, you know, help with putting people to work. And I'm just very, very thankful. And I don't want to get too emotional, but I am very thankful to the program. So I hope you all fund it and keep it going.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you for that testimony. And let me just say this, you know, the way we gauge and measure the success of any program we have is when people like you come for us and say, hey, this is what it did for me. And it has truly done something great for you. Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you for always doing that excellent job that you do. You're a caring spirit, and sir, thank you. Thank you all who had a part in making this happen. And we'll continue to make it happen because this is truly a, a great program. And Commissioner Hamer.
Not for you.
Oh, okay. I'm like, huh!
Thank you.
Okay, sure thing.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
These companies, I'm really not familiar with. How do you all get your, the mentors?
Yes, so Brad Construction, which was, they were going to be here tonight. They actually did the Nassau building for us. So they were a contractor, Major, they are a new vendor with us for construction. And Triad does a lot of work with the Clayton School system.
Do they volunteer, or do you ask them?
We ask them. So what we do is that we look at, you know, contractors that we work with, that we have relationships with, and that's part of the give back to the community. So we go to them and we'll, same thing with our A and E firms. We'll tell them what we're doing, we'll engage with them, and we'll, you know, we just had a meeting, and we'll see how many are involved. Would it be in the first time out? We got a great response because nobody was sure what it would look like in the end. So that's how we find, and we, we look at home first, the county, the companies that we're doing business with to invest into our, our small local businesses.
Okay, and, and the proteges, are they minority businesses or?
Yes, ma'am. The proteges are part of our small local business enterprises.
That was what I was getting to.
Yes, ma'am, they are. And you know, we expanded the program, so it is in more service areas. But yes, ma'am, they have to be a part of the SLBE for now. That's what we're focusing on, yes.
Okay, that's great. That's what I was getting at. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
For working on that from, you know, years back, that's been my baby.
Yes, ma'am. And I want to say thank you to CLO Stanford. He was a big support, you know, I have a lot of ideas, and he'll, you know, we go through them, and he was a great support to get everything rolling to, you know, the funding that was needed. He was there to support me. So I want to say that, and certainly to the board for allowing us to get Mr. Eze on board also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you again for the great work y'all have done in this area. And thank you for your testimony, young lady. All right. I believe that's the last presentation for this evening. So unless there's anything else before this board, we will stand adjourned.